Ever wondered what happens when two sisters combine legal prowess with a passion for community? Our guests today are redefining family law in South Florida, and one of them has her sights set on city council. Hello, hello, friends.
Hi.
Welcome back to the Digital Mayor's Podcast where we spotlight the people, the businesses and stories that make South Florida a great place to live, work, play, learn, give and thrive.
That's right. Whether it's a hidden gem restaurant, an inspiring local leader or an organization doing incredible things, we're here to bring you the good stuff.
Yes, and if this is your first time tuning in, thank you. You've tuned into a good one. And if you are a returning viewer or listener, thank you for coming back. Thank you for joining us again.
That's right. And we've got a great one for you today. We'd love to hear from you. What's your favorite underrated South Florida spot? Send us a DM. So now let's get into it. Let's get into it. Today, we're joined by Caroline Johnson and Kristen Ritchie, founding partners of Johnson Ritchie Family Law in Boca Raton. Caroline specializes in traditional litigation while Kristen focuses on collaborative divorce. Together, they and their team offer a comprehensive approach to family law.
Yes, and and beyond the courtroom, you ready? Beyond the courtroom, these sisters are deeply involved in the community. I mean, like you guys have some roots. Caroline was awesome in the George Snow Foundation's Boca Ballroom Battle. You were so
So awesome.
So good.
We were at your table cheering for you.
And Kristen, rock star extraordinaire for the Golden Bell Education Battle of the Bands. And together, the four of us in Best Foot Forwards Battle of the Bartenders, that was, that was a lot of fun.
Tay Tay.
Tay Tay. And Kristen recently announced a run for city council Boca Raton. We're very excited.
So excited. Yes. Welcome to the podcast. We're so excited to have you guys here.
Thank you. We're so excited to be here.
Absolutely. We've been waiting.
Yes, I know. Like, this has been a big deal. And we'll talk about what's been taking us so long, too. We'll get there. So let's start at the beginning.
Okay.
And then there was.
Okay, you were born, go.
So, so sisters, what inspired you both to pursue careers in law? And this, I'm interested to see who talks first.
Well, I want to know why she followed me.
Oh, there you go.
Oh.
Oh, I know why.
We're both followers, Caroline.
Okay, so what inspired you? And then I'll tell why I followed you there.
Well, my mother had a very good friend who was a judge in Broward County. And originally, I was pre-vet in undergrad.
Okay.
I interned with a veterinarian and I hated it. I love animals. I don't like taking care of them when they're sick.
Right.
So my mom said, hey, why don't you go intern next year with my friend who's a judge at the courthouse? And I absolutely loved it. I love seeing people come in with their problems and, you know, the system tried to solve them. And I fell in love. I decided that's it. I'm going to law school and I'm becoming a lawyer.
That's cool. All right, little sis.
I love that. I majored in psychology and I called my mom one day and I was like, should I go PsyD or PhD? My parents are big on graduate school. You go to graduate school and then you, you know, have a profession and go with it. And my mom said to me, she's like, you should go to law school like your sister. So I had no idea she had pushed her in that direction. She was the type of mom who let us do kind of whatever we wanted. But this was the one time she ever said to me something like that. So I was like, all right.
Must mean something.
It must mean something. I didn't really know that she had encouraged you like that strongly, but I was just like, all right, mom said so. Let's do it. And it turned out to be great.
Yeah, right. It turned out pretty good.
I love how the younger ones follow the elders. We did the same in our business. My brother was in it and he was like, he kept telling me, you should get into real estate. You should get into real estate. I'm like, hey.
I'm sorry.
All right.
20 years later, I apologize.
How did the idea start for you? How did it start for you to start your own firm? Like, where did that come from?
Well, it started when I was pregnant with my second child and Caroline was pregnant with her third. And we decided we needed flexibility. We were looking for that mythical work-life balance. And we just took the leap. We decided to go out on our own. It was almost like job sharing for a little bit. She was on maternity leave. I was on maternity leave, but we kept the doors open and we kept working at it. And then once the kids went to school and we had more time, we decided to grow. That's another story.
That's awesome.
And grow you have.
That's awesome. And so Kristen, you are known for your work in collaborative divorce. So can you explain to our viewers and our listeners, what does that entail and why did you choose that path?
I absolutely can. I appreciate you guys. You have been, since you heard about it years ago when we met, you've been such proponents of it.
Yeah, we love it for sure.
Thank you so much. Collaborative law is an alternative dispute resolution process where in family law matters, we keep the families out of court. We don't file anything at the outset and everything stays confidential. We don't have to file all the financial paperwork. We don't have to file your parenting plan where people know where your kids are going to school and what time you're picking them up. Nobody has to know how much disposable income you have at the end of the month or the end of the year. And we bring on a team approach. We bring on a mental health professional to help with communication and co-parenting skills when we have parents. We bring on a financial neutral to help us figure out what's equitable for the family as a whole. And at the end of the day, every second, every dollar, every effort we spend on this matter is to try to bring it to resolution. We don't do subpoenas and depositions. We call it kind of a grown-up divorce. We try to make each other better through the process, not worse.
Graceful disengagement. We've heard that term before.
Conscious uncoupling. That's what it was. Yeah.
I like that.
I like that. And unfortunately, it doesn't always go that way. But luckily, you've got your sister. Caroline, you handle more of the traditional litigation. So how do your approaches complement each other within the firm?
So yes, different families. Families are unique and what they need to help them through the divorce process is different based on the parties, based on the families. And so I've spent a lot of time fighting very hard for what's fair. And sometimes that's just sadly what's needed to get someone through a divorce. And so it's very much, you know, if someone comes in and maybe the other side isn't being fair, isn't being reasonable, isn't being transparent. We have ways to go to court and have a judge make them, basically. And, you know, they, people usually respect it.
Sucks, but it's necessary sometimes, right?
Yeah. And so I started as a prosecutor and I did 50 jury trials in the first two years.
Wow, really?
Just got so comfortable in court. I like when we can't resolve it, even though we try so hard to resolve it. I like that there is a judge there to resolve it one way or another because sometimes people just need closure. Even if they don't win the motion, just getting closure to it, getting through it.
Well, ego gets in the way and, right?
Right, personnel, a lot, right? You guys do this all the time. A lot gets in the way.
Yeah.
A whole bunch. So you guys are awesome. Like, how you don't have capes on, I don't know.
No, for real. I just put it over there for the podcast.
Yeah. No, but I mean, listen, balancing personal life, work, I mean, your attorneys, your business owners, you're super active in the community, you're great moms. Like, how does this work? How do you guys balance it all?
We have an amazing team. I could not say enough about my team. At Johnson Ritchie Family, there's, there's 12 of us. And it's, you know, six lawyers, two paralegals, and then the rest is just there, the most amazing support staff you could ask for. So the work, there's just a team that we've put together that really, we all want to do great work for our clients. And, you know, we work really well together. And so that helps us knowing that our firm is doing great work. We can spend time in the community and at these amazing events because don't get me started on this community and what a generous community. And amazing opportunity there is to be at these events for great causes. I mean, you could go to something every week for an amazing cause down here.
More than once a week. I get so much FOMO on social media. I'm like, I didn't know about that one, even though I have no energy or money left for it. I want to be there. Yeah, that's awesome. So what are a couple of things that people often misunderstand about family law?
I think from my perspective, people think that there's a winner and a loser. And oftentimes, when they go down that route and the things you say that get in the way, like resentment, not being able to be future-focused, trying to get the judge to decide who was the worst one in a situation, that's not going to help you win in the long run.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just to piggyback on that, you know, the courts want to do what's fair. So if someone came and sat down in our office, like, I want to take them to cleaners and take everything they're worth, the courts want to give you half of what they're worth.
We can all divide by two.
It shouldn't have to be so hard. And so our goal is to get people through it as efficiently as possible. Once there's a reasonable resolution, either it comes from settlement or the judge, we want to get people moved on to the next part of their life. And so I think it's a misconception, though, that like, there's a big winner, like you said, or a big loser. I mean, the courts are literally trying to find a fair resolution for our family.
Yeah.
And that the judge is going to hear it all. Like, they think they come in and you've got all this information, the judge has to hear it all. There's not time, nor is it all relevant, nor is it all admissible. You're not going to get everything in there.
Right. As someone who doesn't know much about court, we were, we were in Leadership Boca together and we were talking to a judge yesterday, who you went to high school with.
Amazing Judge Burke. Yay.
And she was talking about, how many hearings did she say? She's like, I had 84 hearings before 10:00 AM. I'm like, what? How is that even possible? So, yeah, they're not going to hear everything.
But I also asked her the question because I was there, too, is like doctor's offices, you want to balance care and kindness, but you also have to be efficient. How do you do that? And I think she, she answered that really well.
Oh, it was great.
I was very impressed.
She was awesome.
Yeah, she is awesome.
And it was cool to hear a judge say that, not just F these guys or whatever, you know, it was, and she's dealing with some heavy stuff. I mean, she's in domestic violence and I mean, it's big stuff, but she wants to listen, she wants to be kind, and she wants to be respectful of everybody's time.
Yeah, she's great. And the Palm Beach County Family Law Judges are incredible. They want to get it right. They listen as much as they can.
Yeah, I hope to never be there, but I'm glad to know that they're doing right.
They want to get it right and they want to help families find a fair resolution.
Cool. I love that. All right. So let me just say this. This episode is brought to you by Home Dudes Florida. The dependable handyman that turns your honey-do list into a honey-done list. Whether it's a small fix, maybe pre-listing to-dos, post-home inspection to-dos, or really almost anything else. We do things the right way and when things go wrong, we do the right thing. You can book now at lovewherelylivefl.com. Lovewherelylivefl.com.
I do love where I live.
I love where I live.
I do, too.
Awesome.
That's awesome. Thanks. So Kristen.
Ooh, Kristen.
Congratulations on your city council run.
Very excited.
Thank you.
Yes, for sure.
What motivated you to enter the political arena?
Well, I need a second job.
All her free time.
You had 12 free minutes a day.
So Caroline and I moved down to Boca Raton in 1986 and literally lived in Boca consistently, except when I went to college and law school up in U of... Go Gators.
Did you go there, too?
For law school, yeah.
All right.
So it's a community that we both love very, very much. We went to school here. I met my husband here, got married here. Now I'm raising my kids here. They're going to school here. And I want this to be a community where they want to stay and love and live and give and play and all the things, thrive, all the things you said. I love how you added on to kind of that little tagline. And I want to see it have the small-town feel. I want it to maintain that charm. Yes, it's a big city. Like, we have 102,000 residents now currently. So, but, you know, when you grow up here, you know everybody or you know them through somebody. It's like the six degrees of Kevin Bacon, like the 16 degrees of Boca Raton, you know? And I love that. And I think we really can continue to maintain that, even with all the big, exciting things and opportunities that are being brought our way from the current council and the councils before that. And I want to continue those initiatives.
That's awesome. Now, quick trivia, real quick. Do you know how many registered voters there are in Boca Raton? We learned it yesterday.
Well, maybe you learned it. I heard it. I don't remember.
400,000?
What? There's 102,000 members?
64,000. 64,000 registered voters.
That's more than I was going to guess. So that's good.
I have no idea what I was listening to yesterday.
I paid attention to that. I was, it was so cool to sit with Marcy and Peggy and Wendy yesterday and like, listen to them. It was, I loved it.
I love that you guys had government day yesterday.
It was so cool. It was really cool to see, right, we had the mayor, the deputy mayor and two city councilmen. Yeah.
And it was, yeah, real cool to hear from them. Then we, we heard from In West Palm, Wendy Sartori-Link, Alexia Cox, who, again, she's only been in her job a few months. She seemed like really, really impressive.
Well, she's been in the state attorney's office for like 18 years or something.
And in all fairness, I was sitting in the back next to you when they gave out that statistic or those numbers of the registered voters and we weren't listening.
I was sitting right up front. I sat right up front because they had little microphones.
We were talking, we were talking about him inappropriately.
Sorry.
We were. But we, but who else did we see?
Joseph Abruzzo?
Joe Bruzy.
What a cool dude, too. I had no idea what he did, by the way.
But we know him as the clerk of court, right? And she's like, I thought he really just processed the filing fees and recorded the deeds. I'm like, oh, my gosh, there's so much more to the cop control job.
I'm going to give him my, my funds to make some money. Holy crap.
I know.
He's putting money in Palm Beach County.
He really is.
How cool.
Investment income, like, it's just crazy.
People have no idea. Everyone should be doing Leadership Boca. And by the way, how cool is it that next year, when they do this day, one of the city council members that will be there is going to be Kristen Ritchie?
That would be awesome.
You can meet me there, hopefully.
I would love to see that happen. I would love to see that happen. So let me, let me ask you this. In your experiences in family law, how does that influence your perspective on community, community issues?
Well, actually, we were just last week at the Florida Association of Women Lawyers installation party. And one of our good friends, Stacy Mullins, was awarded Lawyer of the Year, well-deserved. And the head partner of her firm, Gray Robinson, got up to give this speech and he said that you build your community to build your firm. And I just looked at her and I was like, is, that's, that's us.
Is that copyrighted? Look at us.
Can I say that? I mean, I'll give him credit, but that's how I, I feel. Like, that's been our passion. Like, we love this community so much. So the stronger the community is, the stronger the firm will become and the better work we can do for the families going through these, these issues.
That's super cool. I love that. And so, I know, we already talked about it, but Caroline, you're currently in Leadership Boca. And Kristen, you graduated from it last year.
With me.
With Dan. How has that experience been for you? And do you both think will impact your professional and personal growth?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, I love it. It's amazing. And Kristen, she didn't like come to me and say after she did it, she wasn't like, oh, I think you should.
Right.
She like, she like, you're doing it. It's life-changing.
I wonder if it was the same on this side.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Yes. I mean, I was going to do it anyways, but he loved it so much. Like, I'm like, I'm, bro, I'm sold. Enough.
Learned so much. I didn't, I didn't learn how many registered voters there were.
Well, I taught you. So now you know, how many?
64,000.
So now you got it. You're good.
But, um, I mean, we learned so much, the different themed days. I mean, just, it's been incredible. Have you, I don't know if you guys have gotten into it before on here, like, all the different days. But, I mean, we've learned so much about this community that we love so much and just things behind the scenes that you don't think about, like, and you're not aware of. And so it's eye-opening. I call it Adult Field Trip Day.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. Absolutely.
Get on a bus and you go and learn about this city we love, this county.
Yeah. Yesterday, we were rating the food, the lunches, based on the different days. The, the top lunch was which one?
NCCI?
NCCI.
Wait, have you done hospitality days?
No.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the, that wins.
You're going to get the Boca Raton.
We're not going to be here. We're going to be stuck in Europe, unfortunately.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're heading to Europe next week.
That's so sad.
Yeah.
But, uh, so far, it was NCCI. Was it Peters Pizzeria, the second one?
Second best was the Pavilion. That food was really good.
Out in Belgrade?
No, the Pavilion.
Oh, the Pavilion in Boca.
In Boca, the big glass.
Pavilion Grill, yeah.
Third was the barbecue in Belgrade. Fourth was Peters Pizzeria. And then there were some sandwiches.
And Peters was only fourth because it, you know, wasn't fresh. We had to have it delivered.
Well, and you didn't want to vote for your own that you sponsored.
I want a phone. I love Peters Pizza.
And Farmer's Table.
Love Farmer's Table, too.
That was delicious.
Oh, that must have been the one that I missed.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It was really good. It was really good.
It was a good one. But the food's been good. It's been good.
Overall.
And so the food's good and, and I did say that the whole event or the whole experience was life-changing.
Yeah.
But that time on the bus with the people that you meet, you know?
That's what it's about, too.
The connections and now the, the long-lasting friendships that we have from that.
That shows the difference between Kristen and I so much because she probably talked the entire time on the bus and how often am I working?
Studying for the cert exam?
Can I tell you, which it's almost like you're reading our minds because you're going into my next question, right? Because we have like kind of exciting news, two things for you guys. Expansion down in Miami. And, and what's the news that you just got today that's going to come out next week that will be official in a few days?
I just found out that I became board certified in marital and family law.
That's huge. That's huge.
I'm so excited.
Yeah, that's so, not everybody has that. This is a, a distinguisher.
It was a hard test and, and, you know, a lot of trials and a lot of things you have to do to qualify to even take the exam, but.
You did it, kid. You did it. Congratulations.
Are you proud of your kid sister?
Oh, my gosh. I am so happy to have her back, first of all, because she was like tucked up. You should have seen her calendar. It was like, study equal distribution, snack, study alimony, like, call Emily. And she would tell everyone in the office, I'm not speaking to anybody except Emily. If you have anything you need, call Emily and I'll talk to her from 2:00 to 2:50.
Emily Wigder?
No.
No, Amelia Wigder. No. Amelia went off to Rice College. We're so proud of her. We had to let her, we had to let her go.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, fine. Let her spread her wings. All right. And so Miami, tell us about that. What prompted that? And how's it going so far?
Well, we wanted to expand so we could help more families. And we thought Miami was a good place to go. They have a very strong collaborative practice group there.
Oh, that's great.
So I have a lot of colleagues. I was able to join that group and then, you know, we, we got an office down there. So I'm going down a few times a month now to meet with clients and to meet with other networking sources. And so far, so good. We're excited about it and hopefully we get so big down there. We need to hire someone to manage it because I can only go down on the bright line so often. Yeah.
Although it is nice to go on the bright line, isn't it?
I love the bright line. Absolutely love it.
It's so comfortable and easy.
To get down to Miami, that's the way to go.
Awesome.
It's the only way.
So we've talked about it, but you're both super involved in our community, which we appreciate and we want to say thank you for it. Can you share a couple of memorable moments from our, from community events that you've participated in?
Sure.
Can I share for you?
Yeah.
I'm going to share one for each of you.
Please. You, you made the rules.
I'm going to share one.
I wasn't asking you, bro.
I know you weren't asking me.
You're the digital mayor.
That's right.
Yes, mayor.
So Caroline, for you, the, the Ballroom Battle, when you did the worm, I loved it. That was one of my favorite things ever. I so enjoyed that.
Awesome. Thank you.
And, and in Battle of the Bands, your entrance to the stage.
Was so awesome.
The coolest ever. Like, nobody's done that. I don't think anybody will. You guys were awesome.
She doesn't give a damn about her reputation.
That's true. That could have been the song.
That was her song.
That was her song. That was her song.
She does give a damn.
All right. So, so now it's your turn. So a couple of memorable things about your, your community involvement, like moments in community events.
So last week, we had YMCA board meeting. Mike and I were there. And I didn't even get to see the video, but I guess there's a video, but this is recent. We had a preschool graduation at the YMCA and the Boca West Foundation donated bikes to each of the kids graduating.
That is beautiful.
And they were so thrilled from what, and, and Brian, if you know Brian Hunn at the YMCA, who says he is the voice of God. He got to announce the bikes and he was, he comes up, and you're all going home with a brand-new bicycle. You get a bike and you get a bike. And the pictures and the kids' faces and just, I, I mean, and that's just one small example of what they do at the YMCA. I could talk about that, this entire podcast and more. But it's just moving. It like brings a tear to your eye and chills. And thank you to the Boca West Foundation for providing those bicycles.
So awesome. So cool.
For sure.
Awesome. I mean, I did the Boca's Ballroom Battle in 2023 and I fell in love with it. I fell in love with everything about that event. It was amazing. It was one of the, I tell Tim Snow, I'm like, it is one of the coolest things I've ever done. And I do a lot of cool things. But it was by far, I mean, it was just so exciting. So I'll never forget that. My worm does get less impressive the older I get.
Well, you're almost 30. I mean, it's, bodies change.
But she's, you know, she doesn't give herself credit. Like, how about reading all of those applications? Like, she spends a lot of time not just dancing and, you know, it's, it's really, and that's inspiring, right, to see what these kids have.
Oh, my God.
And how about, did you get to hear your sister's introduction of you?
Oh, yeah, I did hear it.
That's one of the most beautiful things I've ever heard.
Oh, my God, that was great.
It was one of the most beautiful things I've ever heard.
And I will say for the Battle of the Bands, like, I have never been prouder of my sister than that performance. I mean, she does a lot of great stuff. She's a lawyer. She's, you know, business owner and, I mean, running for a city council. But when she came out like a rock star.
Amazing. It was the coolest.
That's like the coolest event of the year, I think. Because you see these people that you see in suits and dresses and heels. And they're coming out like rock stars, like, right? We did it. I don't think you've done it yet.
Stay tuned. Stay tuned.
But I can honestly say, I think it's the coolest thing I've ever done. The most stressed out I've been in my life and the coolest thing I've ever done.
Get onstage and perform in front of 600, 700 people.
Didn't you guys both win?
We did. As a matter of fact, my trophy is right there.
I love it. Nice.
But we've also done like the lip sync battle. There's so many great.
We did that, too. It was so much fun.
I remember yours.
For the Nat King Cole.
What's your man got to do with me?
Yes. I'm glad you know that song. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
You're so young.
You are. You are.
All right. Now it's time for one of our favorite segments. This is called The Book of Awesome. So what we're going to do is we're going to pass you this book. We're going to ask you to open up to a random page, read the bold title at the top and tell us if it sparks a memory, a story.
A thought, something.
When there's ice cream left at the bottom of the cone.
Ooh.
We have to come up with that.
I love how you just looked at your sister, by the way.
Does it make you think of anything? Like, have you ever had an experience?
If you don't like that, you can get a new one.
Choose a different one.
When there's ice cream left at the bottom of the cone.
Do you know they sell now, like, the bottom of, like, just the bottom?
Do they really?
Yeah, of those like drumstick things that, yeah.
Which are not ice cream, by the way.
It's the best part.
Those aren't made out of ice cream, just so you know. Look at the box. It doesn't say ice cream anywhere on it.
Really?
Yes.
What are my feet? My kids?
I don't know.
This is a good one for Kristen and I. I switched pages. I can't have gluten. So I don't get ice cream at home. So I'm...
Screw gluten.
When you actually remember the name of someone you met earlier at the party.
Oh, my God.
This is amazing.
My brother should get that one, too.
Kristen, when we leave, she'll know the name of every single person she met at that party. She'll know what they did for a living. She'll know the kids' names. She'll know everything you could possibly know.
She's so good.
About them. I'll remember their name, though, and I'll remember if they were fun, but I can't give you any other details probably than that. So that's what that made me think of. You're so good. Like, she, I love meeting people and having fun with people. But you, to take it to the next level, she'll turn it into just lifelong connections. Yeah.
God, I wish I had that. I've tried different techniques. I forget names as they're told to me. I remember details for the rest of my life. So my brother and my wife know that we have a rule. If we walk up somewhere and I don't introduce them, it's because I can't remember the person's name and they need to introduce themselves.
It's a great technique.
But we talk about it before we go because I'm like, I get so stressed out and I'm too like scared to do the, I'm so sorry, what's your name again?
Yeah.
So they know. If I don't introduce, you get introduced.
Yeah, right, always. So whenever.
Hey, I did it for you last week.
We're not mentioning names.
We're not going to say who it was, but I did it for you last week.
Because you don't remember who it was.
Correct. I don't know. I don't remember who it was.
I remember what she does.
I wish that she was fun.
Right. Yes. Yes. All right. So one, one more quick shout out. Our next shout out goes to Jotun Shah of Magic Box Creations. Jotun is a really talented photographer and videographer who does headshots, real estate listings, drone videos and a lot more. And we've been in BNI, Business Networking International with Jotun for, I mean, years. My brother has coached his son in basketball at the Y for years.
Yeah.
And Jotun recently provided some really cool photo and video footage for me for a charity event, a motorcycle ride that we did a couple of weeks ago. And he just did awesome work and he volunteered his time and I'm so grateful. Thank you, Jotun. You can go check out his work at magicbox.us and it's magic with a K, magicbox.us.
Yeah. And can I just add to him real quick? I know it's not part of what you wrote, but I love that guy. He does all of our real estate listing photos and I like half joke, but I'm really serious. Like, he can't go on vacation unless he checks with me if I have listings coming up first. Because I, he's the best.
He's really good.
That's awesome.
Yeah. So I just had to throw that out there. Thank you.
He's really good. All right. So you have your phones handy?
Yes.
Okay. So, so our question is, what's the image on your lock screen and why did you choose it? And you can, you can hold it up and show your camera. Let's see. Ben, you got it. Oh, that's nice.
South part of Bimini.
Oh, yeah? Oh, that's beautiful.
Where we take our boat and that's kind of our little getaway. We get unplugged and...
Peace. I like that.
Family time.
It's fine. Yes. It's your family. It's your beautiful family.
We went to the Maldives and I love this photo.
Yes. It's a beautiful family photo with the beach.
It's, yeah.
Is that a Minnesota Timberwolves fan on there?
And it's just this photo of us in all of our favorite places in the earth together.
I love that.
So, I mean, it was three years ago and I haven't changed it just because it brings back just the best memories ever.
That's the whole purpose. And by the way, so my brother's mentioning your husband over here. Did, did your husband have something that he wanted you to ask him yesterday?[1680.78]
My husband was disappointed when I came home yesterday that I did not ask you how the Celtics are doing when I saw you yesterday.
Such an asshole, your husband.
Okay, get the camera on me. Michael Johnson.
We love him.
Better than the heat.
Okay.
Fine words right there.
Okay. All right. That's uh, he's not wrong.
Listen, trash talking is his love language. If he's talking trash to you, he loves it.
I told, didn't I tell you I was disappointed in him that he didn't text me when the Celtics lost?
Oh, yeah.
But I definitely hit him when he was wearing a Minnesota Timberwolves jersey on, on social media. I texted him right away and he just like liked my, my message. Cause he knows he's wrong.
Yeah.
You know you're wrong.
Such a jerk.
So do either of you had, have any hidden talents or guilty pleasures that you'd like to share with the world?
I love heavy metal.
Yeah, you do.
I knew that.
Hidden talent. I mean, I, the worm is the one thing when someone asks me if I have a hidden talent, I'm like, I can do the worm. That's the only thing. That's my one party trick. That's all I got.
She's a one trick bunny.
I am. Absolutely.
Have you ever done the worm in court?
Oh.
To win a case?
Never in court.
Hey, judge. I rule in favor.
I did it at my wedding in my wedding dress. I did like all the high school pep rallies. That was when it was good. I was, you know.
When you're in high school though.
The lip sync battle.
I did it at the lip sync. No, I, and I did it at the Boca, well, yeah, we said the Boca's Ballroom, but that's it. I think I'm retired a little bit with it. So I need a new.
A new move? A new talent?
Yeah, or a guilty.
Who's your favorite band? Is it Metallica or you have?
Um, I really like Korn.
Love Korn.
It's interesting. You, you mentioned Metallica when my husband's taking Landon, our son, over to Tampa to see Metallica on Friday.
Oh, really? So cool. Has Landon, I know you took Landon to a concert.
We took him to Korn. That was his first heavy show.
Awesome. And he loved it.
He loved it.
Awesome. Metallica puts on such a good show too. Uh, do you ever listen to Rage Against the Machine?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. That was my favorite. I mean, I loved Metallica and Korn, but Rage was like my.
Got him through his teen years.
I felt it.
I'm like the high school kid listening to Rage now in my car.
Yeah. Yeah. I get it. That's all good.
I just like would not have looked at you guys and been like, oh, his favorite band is definitely Rage Against the Machine.
It was super weird. I remember when I heard them for the first time. I was in my friend's car. We were driving and he put the song on. I'm listening. I'm like, what is this? And I like, I felt like emotions. I'm like, what is this? He's like, dude, it's Rage Against the Machine. I'm like, what? And I like went and bought the, at that point, it might've been a tape.
Set tape.
Oh my gosh.
Did you go to Peaches on Glades Road? Did you know, talk about, was it Peaches?
Really?
No. Again, I've only been here for twenty-two years.
Welcome.
Thank you. Only twenty-two years. Uh, what was the place we used to go to up north? Oh my God. What was the name of the place?
I can't remember.
I can picture it. There's one here somewhere still.
I could take it to you in the Wall, in the Walpole Mall and one in Cobb's Corner.
I can't think of the name.
Spencer's?
No.
I don't know.
Spencer's was a thing, but no.
All right. So anyway, so you guys basically grew up in Boca.
Oh, yeah. I was six.
I was four.
Yeah. So we, like I have my pen ready. I'm excited to hear this answer. Do you guys have a favorite local restaurant? I mean, you're both fit though is the problem. Like you don't really eat. You're gluten free.
I'm like, Living Green is fabulous.
I have favorites. I mean, whenever someone, well, we don't go out to dinner a lot. We do a lot of home cooking, but when someone asks me for lunch, I like Max's Grill. I like Jay Alexander's and I like Farmer's Table. Every time I'm like, yes, I will go with you. Could we please go to one of those three places? But I mean, there's so many good spots. Don't get me wrong. I mean, there's so many. And I really, this isn't in Boca, but my absolute favorites, Ocean's Two, Three, Four.
Love Ocean's.
Love it. Anytime I can go, that's where we go.
The view though is not great. That's the only thing.
You know, just that ocean. I think you just get rid of the ocean.
It would be so much better.
Lobster sushi roll. Next time you're there.
Yeah.
The salmon nachos.
Salmon nachos are killer over there. Yeah.
Amazing. Everything, right? Everything Danielle does and her team and Callie over there, they're.
Which Callie?
You need to get that.
There are two Callies. Both Callies, but her daughter.
They should be on this, talking about giving back to the community.
Yeah, no kidding. Right?
Yeah, I would love to, I would love to, hold on. I would love to connect with you, Danielle and Callie, get you as guests on our podcast.
Danielle and Callie, come to the podcast.
Please. All right. Will do. Thank you. Thank you.
So do you have a favorite local dish? It doesn't have to be from one of those restaurants. Like is there like a, I have to get this dish?
I mean, that lobster sushi roll is my go-to if we're gonna, and then at Max's, the chicken pal yard. Is that, I mean, they have some good stuff. Yeah. You go out to eat more than me.
I, well, I know, but I love pizza. So I'm like.
All right. Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Pizza, where's your pizza spot?
Yeah. So there's a Tommaso's.
Yep, I love Tommaso's.
We've got cannoli kitchen over here. We've got pizza time and Caroline will make fun of me because I will eat pizza pretty much every night and like a different place or a different brand to me is like a completely different meal.
She would then buy me over and she'd be like, oh, what kind of pizza do you want tonight? California pizza or Dorado? I'm like, we had frozen pizza last night. She's like, yeah, but a different kind.
Yeah, but it's pizza.
Like to her, that's a totally different meal. No.
I'm with you on this one.
And we've talked about it on here a bunch of times. Do you know Peters Pizzeria?
I don't think I've had Peters Pizzeria.
It is the best.
Okay.
Palmetto Park Road, east, just by the ocean.
Oh, really?
It's in the plaza on the north side, little slice shop there. And then he opened a bigger store.
By like Boca Beach House?
Yeah, across the street.
You know where the ice cream place is?
Yeah.
Literally next to it.
Oh, okay.
And he, he opened a second one, a bigger shop on Federal across from Galuppi's.
In Pompano.
In Pompano. But I'm saying the, the best.
Our favorite pizza.
That we had? Oh my God.
And their gluten free is so good.
So good.
Yes. And that was delivered, not even fresh.
Right.
Their pizza is, and that gluten free one, we've ordered it since then too. Like I don't do gluten free. I don't need to, but it's so good that we've gotten it again.
It's really good.
Do you guys take people out for pizza to thank them for being on your podcast?
Right. Like I need to have some pizza and then we can do an update to this podcast.
We'll do that. All right. So let me, let me ask you this. Imagine, I'm sure this happens all the time, every week. Imagine you don't have any chores. You don't have any laundry to do. You have a totally free day. Okay? After growing up here, living here for so long, how do you enjoy a day off in Boca, in South Florida?
Oh, I'm at the beach. I mean, there's so many different spots that you can go to. If you have a friend who's a member at the Boca Raton, just hit them up. That's such a good, like amazing day. But you know, the Spanish River Beach, there's so many different options where you can go, you know, I live in Delray. You can go north and it's beautiful. So I mean, I'm at the beach and then, I mean, they've got the iPic theaters are so nice for the evening. I just, I love it. Meisner, you can walk up and down a shop a little bit and then go. I still love Town Center. I used to hang out there all the time. We'll go to Town Center. So for me, just out, like, I mean, you gotta get the beach in there. There's so many good parks. I mean, there's, there's, there's just too many options to pick, but definitely will be outside doing it.
That sounds like a good day. How about you, Kristen?
So if I'm gonna disconnect and actually not do any chores or anything else, I will take my paddleboard and I'm fortunate enough, I'm close to James Rutherford Park.
Okay.
So I can paddleboard down to those trails that they put in. Oh my gosh, if you guys haven't done it.
Haven't. We've talked about going, by the way.
We talked about going because Mark Wigder talked about it. You heard Mark say it and you did a group text with us and we haven't done it yet.
I did. I heard you guys on the podcast and I was like, absolutely. You can come over. I have an extra kayak.
All right, let's do it.
It's amazing. It's so relaxing and it's just beautiful. And what a great spot there that, that the city was able to, you know, to, to build out. I mean, all the mangroves and the trails were kind of there, but you couldn't get back there. It was not safe. Now it's safe.
That's awesome.
That's so cool.
I love that.
So I want to give just a, a thank you to both of you. So uh, you both have supported my event at the YMCA like crazy. Shoot for a change. Kristen, you've been on the committee every year and sponsored and I guess your husband participated or something.
Who won last year?
Yeah. Honestly, I don't, I don't remember who won last year.
Look at the camera. Michael Johnson.
Michael Johnson. Is he gonna, you're gonna have to make him listen to? So by the way, when I tell people, I tell people, hey, I talked about you on my podcast. They go, oh, when? I say, you're gonna have to watch.
You tell me. The minute I mention you.
And I like to do it further, like to the end. So they have to listen to the whole thing. But yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. I mean, that event is something that I wanted to do for a long time and I kept getting shut down. And then finally, they said yes, and then COVID came. And we did it anyways. We had sixty-four people in masks.
Crazy.
Participate in the first year. And since then, we've raised, I think we're upwards of over fifty grand so far.
Love that.
And it's a great event where every dollar we raise goes back to the YMCA's financial assistance program. And I like to put that money towards the children because I mean, there's many different causes, but for me, I want the kids to be able to play sports, learn how to swim, have a camp or aftercare, no matter what's going on at home. So they can have a safe place to go. So that's what I fight for. And I just want to say thank you to both of you for your support. And this is, by the way, year six coming up. September thirteenth and fourteenth. I hope you'll be there.
Shootforchange.com.
I'll be cheering.
Shootforchange.com.
I want back to back.
From the hubbub?
He's not.
Hey, well, congrats on a great event and thank you for all you guys do too. Cause you're always out there and making the community a better place.
We try. We like it. But by the way, this, this guy right here, last week, two weeks ago in basketball, hit nine threes. Had a thirty point game.
Thirty points. At my age.
So Michael Johnson, I just want you to know, he's coming.
And by the way, this isn't an eighteen plus league with.
Competitive.
Very competitive. I scored thirty. It was crazy. Yeah, it was crazy. It was crazy. I like, I didn't fall asleep till like four in the morning because I was so like pumped up.
Living it over and over again in your head?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. And my son was there to witness it and he's my biggest fan. And it was so freaking good. Like he's high fiving me on the sidelines and like screaming for me and to me, there's nothing better. Nothing better than that. Yeah.
Well, here, I, I just want to say too, you guys are just so so charismatic, so nice, so caring. I, I hope that it comes through because it's so clear. I mean, like we've known them for a long time. And we love you guys. Like you guys are just, I never thought that I would love a divorce attorney.